And change? All right. We have a forum, and let's take a quick look. Guys, bear with the mayor and/or myself. Dean may or may not be here on time. We have seven proclamations and a life-saving award, so there'll be a pile of reading to do, and a presentation of the Corporate Arts Award plaque. And we'll go ahead and take a look at the agenda. Item one. Item two. And a discussion on item three. Item four. Discussion on item five. Item nine. Donna, I had a question on that regarding the fence. Did we get any additional information?
We did get an answer on that. Your question was whether the fence that's shown in the drawing was actually in existence now or new. It is new.
Okay.
There is a chain link fence at this point in time, and the type of fencing under the ordinance can be wooden, so it meets all the requirements of the ordinance.
Anything else on nine? Item ten?
This actually affects one ball field area. It's the new one owned by the Dallas, Texas Soccer Club, and so it would allow them to have signage, advertising signage, inside of the fencing, just as we do at Railroad. So this is just an ordinance that would allow a private sector club to have the same ability that we have.
And we have that ability at Railroad and at Lake.
Yes, we only really use it at Railroad, but yes.
Any comments, concerns? I guess I get to close the workshop.
Are there any actions to be taken?
Yes. I move to direct the city attorney and special counsel, including but not limited to Blackburn and Carter, to take all steps necessary to oppose municipal solid waste permit amendment, proposed permit number 1312B, including but not limited to submitting comments and requesting a contested case hearing as an affected person on this amendment, which, as proposed, would allow the City of Farmers Branch to vertically and horizontally expand the Camelot landfill.
Check it.
Moved by Councilman Ferguson, seconded by Councilman Tierney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ayes have it. With that, this meeting is adjourned.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, I can't. I have to move for that, don't I? It's not on my notes. That's a horrible thing.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Councilman Tierney, seconded by Councilman Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're out of here.
Fine job.
A meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order, seven o'clock. And please join Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson in our invocation.
Please join me in a moment of silent prayer.
Thank you.
Councilman Vaughn, would you please lead us in the pledges to our flags?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Well, since it's April, it is now proclamation month, so I'm gonna have a few folks join me here at the front of the room.
Proclamation, can you announce that April is the proclamation month?
I've been told that there's some sort of basketball game. I should hurry things up, but the University of Arizona lost, so we're gonna take our time. Julie, where's Bill and Doug? If I could have our Marcus High School Band representatives. There we go. And if you don't mind, would you help reduce himself, please? Yes, there's a microphone. Come on.
Hello, my name is Beznic Abrosi, and I was an assistant drum major this year.
Hi there, my name is Nick Kahn, and I was a drum major for the Marcus Band.
Hi, my name's Hannah Hadden, and I was a drum major as well.
My name's Amanda Elmendorf, and I was a drum major this year.
Good evening, my name is Chase Howard, I'm one of the associate band directors for the Marcus High School.
All right, thank you so much for bringing these great students here, and we'd like to proclaim that whereas the Marcus High School marching band program for the 2014 season is entitled Imperial Treasures, and whereas music included Russian Christmas music by Alfred Reed, Autumn from The Seasons by Alexander Glasun...Glasunov, and by Butcher and May, that's where it's gonna go. Saber dance from Gayen by Aram Ketch, I should have pre-read this thing. And the Great Russian Easter Orbiture by Nikolai Rinsky Korsekov, that one I know. And whereas the band was led on the field by drum majors Amanda, Hannah, Nicholas, and Beznic, and whereas further student leadership was provided by the additional band council, includes the drum majors above, members Dana, woodwind captain Joel, brass cap...brass captain, let's see here, yeah, Dana Rosio, woodwind captain, Joel Beaver, brass captain, Emily Plummer, color guard captain, Jack Sparks percussion co-captain, Jared Marksatch...
Markswatch, yes sir.
Markswatch percussion co-captain, and whereas under the guiding and nurturing direction of the Marcus High School Band staff, Amanda Drinkwater director of bands, Kenon Wiley, David Simon, Chase Howard, and John Leonard, color guard director, and whereas the Marcus High School marching band was named the 2014 UIL 6A State Marching Champion, now therefore I TJ Gilmore, mayor, deputy mayor of the City of Lewisville, on behalf of the entire Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 as Marcus High School Marching Band Month, and commend and congratulate the members of the 2014 Marcus High School Marching Band, and urge all residents of Lewisville to celebrate their tremendous accomplishments. Well done. Ben, did you ever meet him? Awesome. Return your seats unless you've got a few words you want to say about these great kids.
Well, I have plenty of words to say about them. I think the most important thing is we just, you know, for us in this, where we're at, we wouldn't be done without the community support, so we're very, very fortunate to do what we do, to have everyone come out and support this organization, it's just what makes it so special. So, thank you all very much. Thank you.
Okay, does this proclamation have a bunch of Soviet names? That's what I need to know. All right, if I could have Amy Wells and the Keep Lewisville Beautiful team? All right. Amy, we have a proclamation here for Keep Lewisville Beautiful Month. So whereas Keep America Beautiful Incorporated is a national nonprofit organization dedicated to helping individuals improve their community environments, and has established the Great American Cleanup as its signature national effort for involving American citizens in environmental stewardship by celebrating its 31st anniversary in 2015, featuring over 3.8 million volunteers participating in over 30,000 events in over 16,000 communities in all 50 states, and whereas Keep Lewisville Beautiful is an award-winning affiliate of Keep America Beautiful and Keep Texas Beautiful that will host and promote litter abatement, recycling, and beautification activities at its 29th Annual Citywide Spring Cleanup Project and Earth Day Educational Expo taking on Saturday, April 25th, and whereas Keep Lewisville Beautiful has been recognized nationally by Keep America Beautiful for first-place affiliate in the population category 50,000 to 201,000 for its community engagement and programming, and has been recognized by the State of Texas for first-place Governor's Community Achievement Award, and whereas the community of Lewisville is proud of its natural resources and its neighborhoods and seeks to protect and improve our community through the action of citizens, schools, government, and businesses working together, and whereas the City of Lewisville recognizes the important commitment to improve American communities through litter prevention, beautification, and solid waste management initiatives, and are committed to help spread the word about the importance of volunteerism and motivate everyone in our communities to become stewards of the environment. They have no idea how much more there is to read on this, right? You and I are the only ones. Now therefore, I TJ Gilmore, deputy mayor of the City of Lewisville, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 as Keep Lewisville Beautiful Month in the City of Lewisville, and call upon our citizens to join in activities that promote responsible environmental stewardship and help us renew our commitment to building a better world today and for future generations. And you have some words to say.
I just want to say thank you for your support of Keep Lewisville Beautiful, and also invite everyone who is in attendance tonight to come out to our event on April 25th. It's gonna be a lot of fun, we're expecting over 600 volunteers to come out and make a difference in our community. So if you're interested, please contact Keep Lewisville Beautiful. Thank you.
Ms. Wagen, we have a library to proclaim. They didn't write nearly as many words on this one.
That's okay.
All right. We have books, we have plenty of them. I have two of them checked out, and they're not late at the moment, so that's always a good thing. Whereas libraries create potential and possibilities within their communities, campuses, and schools, and whereas libraries level the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies, and whereas libraries continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities, and whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through innovative STEAM programming, maker spaces, job-seeking resources, and the power of reading, and whereas librarians are trained, tech-savvy professionals providing technology training and access to downloadable content like ebooks, and whereas libraries support democracy and affect social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, and whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week, now therefore I TJ Gilmore, deputy mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 12 through 18, 2015, as National Library Week, and I encourage all residents to visit the library this week to take advantage of the wonderful resources we have available at the library. Unlimited possibilities within those walls. Well done.
Well, I want to say continued thank you for your support through all the years to make this library, this community's one-stop shop for early literacy, education support, recreation, technology, and workforce development. Thank you very much.
Angela Sherrod? We have National Public Safety Telecommunicators. Thank you so much. This is so much fun to be up here with other people. By myself, this would be a lot. Here we go. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the City of Lewisville Police Fire Communication Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunicators of the City of Lewisville have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, now therefore I TJ Gilmore, deputy mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 12 through 18, 2015, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Lewisville in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Well done.
We just want to say thank you for your continued support of the dispatch center in Lewisville. We appreciate it, and stop by, come and see us.
I had the opportunity to ride along with the police department this past Friday, and Lord love you all for dealing with those guys, because it's crazy out there some nights. So it was really fascinating to see the interplay, and how well that team back there works with the team that's out on the streets. It's really a great thing that we have. Crystal Palmer and Ethel Strother, I hope I didn't mess that one up too bad, we have National Volunteer Week. And Crystal, you had some other folks, I think, to recognize, if you wouldn't...
Yes.
Wouldn't, yeah, bring them all up.
Okay. All volunteers?
Jeez.
Awesome.
Sure.
Go for it.
Okay, we have Dr. Suzette Nygaard. She is a veterinarian that comes every Tuesday and looks after all of our animals. We were able to rabies vaccinate everything prior to them leaving the shelter. We're very, very indebted to her service. She's a great volunteer. We have Patty Fritkowski, I'm sorry, Jody Mills, Jackie Mitchell, Frieda Pierce, and Tom and Cindy Crossall. And these are just a few of our...
What, 40, 70?
74 volunteers that we have currently that come out on a regular basis, walk the animals. We have jog-a-dog program. We have adoption events. We have people that come out and do laundry, which is really good. Newsletters, they provide socialization for the animals, and basic housekeeping stuff. They do adoption counseling, and we're just, we're very indebted, and that's, you know, it's because of them that we're able to have a 100% safe rate and not have to euthanize anything for space in over a year.
I'll go through this, but I can't sing better than that, because I will tell you that our animal services team and all of our departments have some phenomenal volunteers across the city, and I thank you all for all the time that it takes. Whereas serious social problems concern our nation and threaten the future, and whereas connecting with others and working together through volunteer service can bridge the differences that separate people and help them solve serious social problems, and whereas we, the American people, have a tradition of philanthropy and volunteerism, and whereas millions of sacrificing individuals touched and enhance the lives of millions daily doing good and by giving where there is a need, rebuilding what has been torn down, teaching where there was a desire to learn, and inspiring those who had lost hope, and whereas the Points of Light Foundation and its affiliate volunteer centers have joined to promote an annual national week of doing good that celebrates and strengthens the spirit of volunteer service, and whereas volunteer service is an investment in the future we all must share, now therefore I TJ Gilmore, deputy mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 13 through 18, 2015, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Lewisville in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Well done.
We just want to say thank you for your continued support of the dispatch center in Lewisville. We appreciate it, and stop by, come and see us.
I had the opportunity to ride along with the police department this past Friday, and Lord love you all for dealing with those guys, because it's crazy out there some nights. So it was really fascinating to see the interplay, and how well that team back there works with the team that's out on the streets. It's really a great thing that we have. Crystal Palmer and Ethel Strother, I hope I didn't mess that one up too bad, we have National Volunteer Week. And Crystal, you had some other folks, I think, to recognize, if you wouldn't...
Yes.
Wouldn't, yeah, bring them all up.
Okay. All volunteers?
Jeez.
Awesome.
Sure.
Go for it.
Okay, we have Dr. Suzette Nygaard. She is a veterinarian that comes every Tuesday and looks after all of our animals. We were able to rabies vaccinate everything prior to them leaving the shelter. We're very, very indebted to her service. She's a great volunteer. We have Patty Fritkowski, I'm sorry, Jody Mills, Jackie Mitchell, Frieda Pierce, and Tom and Cindy Crossall. And these are just a few of our...
What, 40, 70?
74 volunteers that we have currently that come out on a regular basis, walk the animals. We have jog-a-dog program. We have adoption events. We have people that come out and do laundry, which is really good. Newsletters, they provide socialization for the animals, and basic housekeeping stuff. They do adoption counseling, and we're just, we're very indebted, and that's, you know, it's because of them that we're able to have a 100% safe rate and not have to euthanize anything for space in over a year.
I'll go through this, but I can't sing better than that, because I will tell you that our animal services team and all of our departments have some phenomenal volunteers across the city, and I thank you all for all the time that it takes. Whereas serious social problems concern our nation and threaten the future, and whereas connecting with others and working together through volunteer service can bridge the differences that separate people and help them solve serious social problems, and whereas we, the American people, have a tradition of philanthropy and volunteerism, and whereas millions of sacrificing individuals touched and enhance the lives of millions daily doing good and by giving where there is a need, rebuilding what has been torn down, teaching where there was a desire to learn, and inspiring those who had lost hope, and whereas the Points of Light Foundation and its affiliate volunteer centers have joined to promote an annual national week of doing good that celebrates and strengthens the spirit of volunteer service, and whereas volunteer service is an investment in the future we all must share, now therefore I TJ Gilmore, deputy mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 13 through 18, 2015, as National Volunteer Week in Lewisville, Texas, and urge my fellow citizens to observe and recognize the week by connecting with friends, fellow employees, and relatives, and with religious, school, and civic groups to engage in projects benefiting their community. Thank you all so much. Thank you so much. Nice to see everybody out there. I thank you, we appreciate it. We all have our burden in the basketball season, right? Kathy Locke and Kristen Tinsley? For Relay for Life? This is one that is especially fond for me. Had the opportunity to be involved with this for a few years, and it's the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life. This proclamation this year is for Relay for Life, and whereas Relay for Life is the signature activity of the American Cancer Society and honors cancer survivors, anyone ever diagnosed with cancer, and remembers those lost to the disease, and whereas money raised during the American Cancer Society Relay for Life of Lewisville Flower Mound helps support research, education, advocacy, and patient services, and whereas Relay for Life helps fund more than 100 million in cancer research each year, now therefore I TJ Gilmore, deputy mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim April 15, 2015, at participating local eating establishments as Stick a Fork in Cancer Day, and do hereby proclaim May 15, 2015, as Relay for Life Lewisville Flower Mound Day in the City of Lewisville, and encourage citizens to participate at the Lewisville High School Harmon Campus on May 15, 2015, from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Can I imagine you have a few words to say?
We just encourage everyone to come out to Relay for Life. We will be hosting a pre-event on April 14th, it's a Tuesday night, a week from tomorrow. We'll have a bunch of different restaurants on our website and a flyer where you can go out, and all the, well, 10%, 15% of the proceeds will come to our event. All of our proceeds will go straight to the American Cancer Society to fund lifesaving research. Thank you.
And Scott Austin? For Crime Victims Rights Week? Oh, where is he? Good to see you. Ready? We've got some words. Whereas Americans are the victims of more than 26 million crimes each year, and crime can touch the lives of anyone regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status, and whereas many victims face challenges in finding appropriate services, including victims with disabilities, young victims of color, deaf and hard-of-hearing victims, LGBTQ victims, tribal victims, elder victims, victims with mental illness, immigrant victims, teen victims, victims with limited English proficiency, and other, and whereas the entire community has a role to play, and whereas involving survivors helps victim service providers and criminal justice professionals understand the culture, values, and expectations of under- and unserved victims who seek assistance and justice, and whereas engaging victims' communities and learning from leaders about their unique needs helps service providers foster a supportive and culturally relevant atmosphere in which victims seek help and healing, and whereas incorporating communities, existing experts, and trusted sources of support into efforts to fully serve survivors will develop a criminal justice system response that is truly accessible and appropriate for all victims of crime. And whereas victims know best how to direct and manage their own lives, and true recovery from crime will incorporate a victim's cultural, religious, economic, social, and personal interests, and whereas with the full weight of their community and victim service providers behind them, survivors will feel empowered to face their grief, loss, fear, anger, and shame without fear of judgment, and will feel understood and worthy of support, and whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week is an opportune time to commit to ensuring that all victims of crime, even those who are challenged to reach or serve, are offered culturally and linguistically accessible and appropriate services in the aftermath of crime, and whereas City of Lewisville is hereby dedicated to building partnerships with trusted sources of support, including community leaders, religious groups, schools, and other agencies to better reach and serve all victims of crime no matter their community, now therefore I TJ Gilmore, deputy mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 19 through 25, 2015, as Crime Victims Rights Week, and reaffirm this city's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during the Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year, and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Thank you, sir. And Chief, I think we have some recognitions for the department as well?
Yes, sir. Of course, not to be overshadowed by the, some basketball game on tonight, you know, the Rangers start their season today, too, so. Do have the opportunity tonight, and the privilege, to be able to award a couple of lifesaving awards. I'd like to ask Officer Jacque Moore and Officer Steve Schaefer, please join me down front. You know, while they're making their way down here, it's always amazing to me, the kind of dedication that the employees of the Louisville Police Department make to this community, not only the officers in uniform that we're typically used to seeing out there, but also those folks in the back room, so to speak, the dispatchers, and records clerks, and those folks. So they're gonna stand way back there, but I'm gonna have them move up here. Come on up here, guys. All righty. We'll start with Officer Jacque Moore. On October 24, 2014, Officer Moore was dispatched to an overdose call at the Motel 6. Upon arrival, Officer Moore found an unconscious male who was not breathing. Officer Moore began to perform CPR until Louisville Fire Department medics arrived and took over. The male was transported to Medical Center in Lewisville, where he was breathing and alert. The police department's awards committee met to review this incident and recommended Officer Moore receive a lifesaving award. If not for his quick response and immediate actions, the man most likely would have died. On behalf of the City of Lewisville and Louisville Police Department, it is with great pride that presents you with a lifesaving award. Officer Moore, do you have any family members here you'd like to introduce?
Actually, yes, my wife Jennifer Moore and our son back there, Brady Moore.
All righty, Officer Steve Schaefer. On February 7, 2015, Officer Schaefer was dispatched to a drowning call, where he found a woman performing CPR on a young child. Officer Schaefer performed a back blow, which caused the child to spin up, clearing her airway. The Louisville Fire Department personnel arrived and took over medical care. The child was eventually transported to Children's Hospital and was listed in stable condition. The police department's award committee met to review this incident and recommend Officer Schaefer receive a lifesaving award.[1739.12]
that presents you with a lifesaving award. Officer Moore, do you have any family members here you'd like to introduce?
Actually, yes, my wife Jennifer Moore and our son back there, Bradley Moore.
Alrighty, Officer Steve Schaefer. On February 7, 2015, Officer Schaefer was dispatched to a drowning call where he found a woman performing CPR on a young child. Officer Schaefer performed a back blow which caused the child to spit up, clearing her airway. The Louisville Fire Department personnel arrived and took over medical care. The child was eventually transported to Children's Hospital and was listed in stable condition. The Police Department's Award Committee met to review this incident and recommend Officer Schaefer receive a lifesaving award. If not for his quick response and immediate actions, this child would have most likely died. So on behalf of the City of Lewisville and the Louisville Police Department, it is with great pride that presents you with a lifesaving award. And speaking of family members, you know, we couldn't do what we do day in and day out if it were not for the family that supports us at home. You know, we spend a lot of time away doing the things that we do each and every day. I also wanted to point out the members of the department that came to see these lifesaving awards. Would you guys please stand? Let us recognize you. I can't tell you how proud I am of these guys, you know, especially these days when, in other places besides the utopia of Lewisville, law enforcement is criticized for what they do every day. These gentlemen, men and women are great character witnesses to the professional law enforcement. We're very proud of you fellows. Thanks.
Thank you, officers, for all you do. And next we have Ms. Linda Lee. Okay, Jim, if you would.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jim Ware, manager of the MCL Grand, and I would like to introduce to you tonight a very special person, Ms. Linda Lee, who is the Executive Director of the Texas Nonprofit Theaters. In the moment she's going to present this plaque, but I'd like to ask Deputy Mayor Protem Ferguson, who's a major supporter of the arts, to come forward to participate. Ms. Lee?
I am here this evening to present to you Deputy Mayor Gilmore and Mr. Ferguson, an award, the Corporate Arts Award to the City of Lewisville. This award is from the Texas Nonprofit Theaters. We are a statewide service organization for all nonprofit theaters in the state, and it is with great joy that I give this to you because you have shown a great commitment to the arts for your community. You have given to the people of your community a great opportunity by approving and then building the MCL Grand Theater. And when I heard that Jim Ware was going to be the Director of the MCL Grand, I don't think it took me but about five minutes before I was on the phone to him saying, "Jim, I have a great opportunity for you. How would you like to host the TNT Texas Act Fest, Quad II?" That was in 2010, so it hadn't even been built yet. I watched with great glee as it rose from the ground and became the facility, and was extremely honored to be the first organization to do a theater event in that space back in January of 2011. Since that time, we have done three quad festivals, three state festivals, one region festival, which included five states, and one humongous youth conference there with about 400 people. It is a fabulous facility, and we are so pleased to be able to come to Lewisville and to take advantage of this wonderful thing that you have given to your citizens. I also want to say thank you for the support of the city, the financial support that makes it possible for an organization such as mine, which is very small, we just organize a lot, to come over and be a part of the community, and put heads in beds, and have people who come and learn a little bit about your community through its restaurants and its Main Street area here. We had nine, actually 10 theater companies that came and performed in March. They all had a great experience here, and I am really, really pleased to present to you, sir, the Corporate Arts Award, not often given, but very happily given to you.
Thank you so much.
And there is a program, so you can see what that was all about.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. I cannot express how important the arts are to our community, as can be seen by our residents and the investment that they've placed here for our arts and the folks that are here. So as we continue to grow in Lewisville, we hope you continue to come back.
I plan to.
Right. Councilman Ferguson, is that a call list?
Yep. All right, just, Ms. Lee, I want to thank you so much. It's our pleasure to have you come here and come back again and again. If there weren't arts, it would be a very dull life with no expression of creativity, and y'all certainly have brought us some amazing performances over the years and amazing events, and I hope you come back again. I'm sure you will.
Oh, we will.
And I cannot thank you enough for what you do. And I also, so, thank you. I also want to thank Mr. Ware for the tremendous job that he does with the Arts Center in connecting with people like you. I think his name was, I don't say his name, I've decided it is, so I want to thank you for this event, and thank you for participation.
Oh, actually, it's been my pleasure and my privilege to be the person who opened that building and operated along with a great staff, one of whom is taking my picture right now. We have a small but really dedicated group of people that help us put on events like the Theater Festival, and we look forward to doing more of the same. Thank you.
Group shots. Benadryl's starting to kick in, so we're in good shape. I will now, at this time, open up the Visitors Citizens Forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. I do not have any comment cards at this time. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to the Consent Agenda. All the following in the Consent Agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the City Secretary. I do not have any speaker cards on the Consent Agenda, nor did any of the council ask for anything to be broken out, so I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda?
Moved to approve by Councilman Tierney.
Second.
Second by Councilman Durham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent Agenda passes. Regular hearings. Item 8, consideration of a variance to the Lewisville City Code, Section 6-103, access management regarding driveway width and driveway spacing at Fire Station Number 6, located at the 2120 Midway Road as requested by Robert Pretis, P.E., Jaster Quintanilla, Dallas, L.L.P., on behalf of the City of Lewisville. What is with all the names tonight? I'm having a hard time. My apologies if I've butchered any. The subject site is a 1.62 acre lot zone public use within Fire Station 6 Edition. The City of Lewisville is proposing a building addition to the existing Fire Station Number 6. Staff has reviewed and approved the engineering site plan subject to the City Council approval of the following variances. A, to allow a driveway width greater than 35 feet, and B, to allow the driveway spacing to be less than 75 feet. Funding for the renovation of Fire Station 6 was approved in the fiscal year 1314 and 1415 budgets. The bid award for construction was approved by City Council on March 16, 2015. The recommendation from staff is that the City Council approve the variance as set forth in the caption above. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved to approve by Councilman Ferguson, second by Councilman Tierney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes. Item 9, consideration of a final plat of Studio 13 Edition Lot 1, Block A, a 0.231 acre parcel zoned Old Town Mixed Use 2, located near the southeast corner of Main Street and Cowan Avenue with a requested variance to the city code requested by the property owner, Leonard Reeves of Studio 13 LLC. The purpose of the plat is to create a lot of record. On March 16, 2015, the City Council approved rezoning the property from local commercial to Old Town Mixed Use 2. The existing building on the property is being remodeled as an office for Studio 13 Design Group. In conjunction with the plat, the applicant has applied for a variance to waive the required right-of-way dedication on Main Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the final plat and requested right-of-way variance. Staff recommendation is that the City Council approve the plat and variance as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Reeves is here to answer any questions, if there are any. And with that, I will entertain a motion.
Move, move to approve per the caption.
Okay, moved by Councilman Durham?
Second.
Second by Councilman Vaughn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes. Thank you for being here, Mr. Reeves. Item 10, consideration of an ordinance amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter 11, signs by adding regulations related to ball field fencing signs. Staff has identified the need for ordinance changes to address ball field fencing signs. Staff has requested that ball field fencing signage be allowed without a permit as long as certain criteria are met as outlined in the ordinance. The current sign ordinance prohibits this type of signage, thus the reason for the proposed change. Recommendation is that the City Council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Staff, are there any comments to be made on this one? I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Tierney, second by?
Second.
Second by Councilman Durham. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending Chapter 11 signs of the Lewisville City Code by adding regulations related to ball field fencing signs, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing a penalty, providing an effective date and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. With that, we will move into reports. Nika? No? No? We'll keep working our way? This basketball game, obviously, is important to some folk.
Rangers.
Yeah, Rangers, Rangers. Oh, sorry, that's baseball, yeah. My wife always said I'm not that great with sports. How's the lake?
Well, I'll give you a report. We actually are at a higher level than we have been since about 18 months, so.
Hey.
We're officially only four feet low, and I did check the report. Councilman Ferguson's always interested, and we actually are only at 29.33% depletion rates, so it's a 76% full, so that's pretty good. We're officially off the drought list and just at a, just a low rainfall area, so.
And we're still recommending that citizens keep an eye on their water usage.
Yes, and just remind everyone that beginning May 1 is our timeframe, May 1 through September 30th, when we have the time restrictions.
Thank you very much. Anything? Nothing? All right. All right, fair enough. Councilman?
Deputy Mayor, I want to just remind everybody that we are in the pollen season right now, for those people that are not affected by it right now, and the green haze, hopefully I'll be able to breathe here in a few weeks when it's over with. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City Manager?
No, sir.
Councilman?
Yes, sir. MCL Grand, got a lot of things going on. Corum Deo Academy Band will have a concert on April 14. On April 17, we have the final concert of Lewisville Lake Symphony. That will feature Pavel Gentov, who is the winner of the Takamatsu, the very first Takamatsu International Piano Competition. It was a very prestigious competition. I've forgotten how many people entered that, and he'll be playing Shostakovich Concerto Number 1, which is for piano, trumpet and strings. There'll be several other pieces on the concert, another one by Shostakovich, Tchaikovsky and Beethoven, so. Final concert of the year, we always do a kind of a blowout for that concert, and this should be one, so definitely encourage you to consider coming and enjoying a good evening of fine music. An Evening in the Round will be the Texas Tune Series on April 18, the very next night, Saturday, featuring Tom Faulkner, Beth Wood and Michael Hearn. And then we have a Children's Magic Show on April 11. We have Visual Arts League Jam Session, always on Friday night, that's free, and that's just kind of growing by leaps and bounds. Art exhibits, this is always a fun time of the year because this is when LISD starts rotating their different grade levels art exhibits through, and it just is stunning what some of these kids can do, and especially when you look and find out that they're in the fifth grade. But we're going to start with the LISD Elementary East. That'll be April 10 through the 18, and then on April 24, LISD Elementary West will rotate through. And then in the North Gallery, graffiti and street art is presented by the Visual Arts League through May 30. You can always go to mclgrand.com for more information on any event. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing from our vaunted city attorney? That's my new word, vaunted. Ms. Heinzey? Officer, thank you so much for being here. We greatly appreciate it, and all the work that you do, it's not gone unnoticed, so. And if you get a chance, we have some phenomenal organizational, for citizens, to go to with our Police and Fire Academies every year. Kind of keep an eye open for those. I don't think we have anything right now, but coming up in the fall, I think it's the Fire Academy, but they're great. What's that? In the middle of one right now?
Right now.
Yeah. They're phenomenal opportunities to learn what these guys do on a daily basis. I do want to make one other announcement, is that our Lewisville Senior Activity Center Health Fair will be Friday, April 24, so please plan for that. That's a great event. It's going to be at the Senior Center on South Valley Parkway, down there at Memorial Park. It's a phenomenal event, goes till about 1 o'clock, and gets all that health fair stuff out of the way, so it's good information. With that, I will, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551-071, consultation with attorney, legal issues related to the construction of Old Town Park Plaza, Section 551-071, consultation with attorney pending litigation, City of Lewisville versus City of Farmers Branch and Camelot Landfill, Texas LP, case number 4:12, CV 00782, United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas Sherman Division, Texas Commissions on Environmental Quality Modification to Municipal Solid Waste Permit, Number 1312A, and Texas Commission on Environmental Quality Application to Obtain Municipal Solid Waste Permit Amendment Permit, Number 1312B, as also, Section 551-072, real estate property acquisition, and Section 551-087, economic development deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We will adjourn into closed session.